I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have held our public comment prior to the start of the meeting and now we are called to order. Roll call of attendance?
Done.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to make a motion to move the Personnel Consent Items, Item 16D, to discussion and approval with the open enrollment because it all revolves around the budget pieces as we look at enrollment and budgets to put those things together.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce your 10C?
I have it as 10D or 16D.
Yeah.
Oh, to move it, I'm sorry. Yes. So I have an amendment to the motion with a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So now we have the full motion on the floor to approve the amended agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we do have the approval of the consent agenda minus that one item. Can I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As Dr. Larson said earlier, there are no presentations and recognitions this month. Our student representative will start when the school year starts, so we'll have a report from her in September. Approval of the minutes, from July 13th, we had a regular school board meeting.
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Discussion information items. First item is calendar events. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, there's a lot of great events coming up. It seems like we are really ramping things up. I do want to draw attention to a couple of big things that are happening. On Monday, August 21st and Tuesday, August 22nd, that's the Instructional Leadership Team, that's under the leadership of Ms. Lynn Veeker and Ms. Beth Sneeden. We'll be looking at the data, including the MCA tests and so on. And then at the end of that time, the principals will go back and they'll be working with their building goals. All the principals will be there and the rest of our team. So it'll be a pretty good couple of days. Then we also have our new employee orientation and staff development. And then, as you can see, that week of the workshop week, on Tuesday, August 29th, there's orientations. On Wednesday, the 30th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., the high schools hosting the academic awards. That will be in the Chautauqua Fine Arts Center. We'll be also identifying alumni of distinction. And then also on that same day, we have the district welcome and Teacher of the Year presentation and an all-staff luncheon. The district welcome, the Teacher of the Year will be Kathy Mackin, and I believe Stacy Sell will be speaking for the school board at that event. So that'll be on Wednesday, the 30th. And then we have our study session on August 31st rather than the 24th. We moved it back a week. And then the first day of school, one of the happiest days for me and I think for a lot of kids and I think also for a lot of parents. Then I can't not mention the World's Best Workforce presentation. That's going to be on Thursday, September 14th. Ms. Lynn Veeker will be doing that presentation prior to the school board meeting in this room.
Any other events board members like to call out?
Is that presentation for the community?
Okay.
And board members.
And board members. Kevin, another item?
Question and an item to highlight. The Alumni of Distinction Award, do the recipients, are they now aware that they are so endowed with the ... I just didn't want them not to feel the town because of the time coming up, so good. Second item I would highlight is Saturday, September 16th, is the MAF Up North Signature Party over at Cabin 61. And they have a band that's going to play Two Chicks and a Hick or something like that. It's a country band. Yep, I think that's what it is. And I, as a willing participant, I went over and scouted Cabin 61 to just make sure that the food was there and everything. And I give it two thumbs up. It was really awesome. So if you haven't been over to Cabin 61, we have an excellent opportunity on September 16th. Apparently 8 o'clock is when this place will close down to the general public and then it'll be this private party. So not to be missed and you can wear your flannels and any other Up North kind of accoutrements to play the part. So should be a good time.
Any other events board members like to call out? Item 9B, 2017-2018 Budget and Financial Timeline. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, sometimes it feels like all we do is finance things. We had the truth and taxation hearing in December and then in January, Lynn Veeker presented at a study session, potential about cuts and enrollment things. We also had a budget presentation in February. We approved the preliminary budget in March. We discussed cuts at the March 23rd session and there was a presentation at the board and the board acted then. And then we had some action items in April and May that were including non-renewals. Another budget presentation about this and about the 2018-19 preliminary budget was in May. And in June, we approved the 2018-19 budget. And now we have our new business manager here to share a little bit about some other timeline pieces on that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bill Manozzi, our Director of Business and Finance.
Good evening, everyone. Included in your board packet this evening, you will have two items. One would be a financial timeline and the second would be a finance calendar. So as we all know, our fiscal year runs from July through June and can be somewhat cumbersome from a financial timeline standpoint. So the purpose here is really to provide clarity before we really get started in the fiscal year and the ability to anticipate what's coming up. What are the upcoming agenda items from a financial standpoint? So that's really the purpose here. So I'm actually going to start with the slide on the screen, just a budget development timeline. And I realize a lot of this is going to be by way of review, but I just think it's a good time of the year to look at, looking at a budget development timeline from a fiscal year standpoint. So as we all know, the fiscal year starts on July 1st. So you can see up in the top left-hand corner, we have, starting in July. And really, July and August are spent largely looking at our financial forecasts as we've done here recently and also our levy inputs, which we are currently doing. We really get started, obviously, the school year starts after Labor Day. The first key date from a finance standpoint is September when we're required, the school board is required to approve the preliminary levy. And in this, I'll reference things from a current year standpoint. That would be the preliminary levy for 2017 pay 2018. So that happens in the month of September. And we're required to do that in September because then that's the information that goes on the preliminary tax statements to our taxpayers in the month of November. So that's kind of how that timing works out. We'll move on with budget planning sessions in October and then our audit presentation from the prior year to the school board happens in November. In our case, it's tentatively slated for November 9th when MMKR is going to come in and present the prior year audit results. So for a portion of the year, we're actually working in two, if not three, different fiscal years. We're looking at the prior year audit results. We're certainly looking at current year budget to actual. And then we're looking at next year from a levy standpoint. So a little bit cumbersome there, the beginning part of the year. So hopefully, this is able to provide some clarity. The next meeting in December is when we'll have our truth and taxation presentation. The school board certifies the pay 18 levy at our first meeting, our board meeting in December, regular board meeting in December. And then that really is the kickoff to the budget planning for the next year. Once we certify the preliminary levy, having trouble with the mouse here, certify the preliminary or the final levy in December, that really kicks off the budget planning for the next year. You can see on the calendar, I have us at the second meeting in December, looking at revising the 2017-18, the current year budget. And then, starting right away in January, we will do some, the heavy lifting on the next year's budget. So from about January through March, it'll be all 18-19 budget. We'll develop our initial budget assumptions for 18-19, which will include analyzing our prior year audited results because we will know those by that point. We'll look at the current year budget to actual, how are things looking there? Look at enrollment trends, you know, how are we looking from an enrollment standpoint? What's the legislature doing and how does that impact our financial situation? And also other key variables such as negotiations, what's the status of negotiations and how do we feel like that's going to impact our budget scenario as well? We'll continue on in January, monitoring and running different scenarios from an enrollment projection and staffing assessment standpoint. And then we'll refine those projections over late winter into the spring of the year into February and March. And then by March, we'll have a budget development update to the school board, which will include staffing decisions and budget impact scenarios. So you'll have that from a financial standpoint later on in March. And then afterwards, after staffing decisions are made, we'll present final proposals to the finance committee and to the school board in May. And then finally, at the end of the 2017-18 year, as required by statute, we will bring the formal 2018-19 preliminary budget for approval in June, as required by statute before June 30th. So a lot of information here. Sometimes it's just helpful to have it kind of on an illustrative purpose so you can kind of anticipate what's coming and see what's ahead. The second slide, if I can pull it up here. I realize there's quite a bit, quite a bit of information on here as well, but this is just a tentative calendar. And obviously, we're sitting here on August 10th and this can and most likely will change. But I think it is helpful to look at a calendar and where we think we're going from a finance standpoint. So there's quite a bit of information on here. I tried to break it out into blue, I guess we'll call that tan, and then green sections. The blue sections being the regular school board meetings, the tan sections being the study sessions, and then the green sections being the finance committee. So I've talked with Dr. Larson and we would like to see the finance committee be active this year, a little bit more active this year. I have them meeting six times throughout the fiscal year and try to schedule them at key times throughout the fiscal year, i.e. during the audit process or after the audit process and during budget updates, for example. I think that that would be good to get them active and involved even more than they maybe have been. So and I do realize that there's lots of information. To me, when I look at this, it's really helpful to break it out into the three main sections. So as we look at this and try to break this out into three sections, if we look at August 10th, which is tonight, through approximately November 9th, when the school board is presented with the audit from MMKR. If we look at that as kind of our first section, budget planning and current year tracking, that's kind of how I refer to the first third of the fiscal year, budget planning and current year tracking. Then after the audit report from MMKR, we'll move on to, let's call it December through March, 2018-19 planning and different scenarios on decision-making for next fiscal year. So that's about December through March. And then finally, from April through June, we'll look at final approval of the 18-19 budget and then some future financial planning as well. So obviously, there's some overlapping presentations that we're going to have throughout the year. Financial forecast would be one of them as I sit here right now. But it's easiest to kind of digest this in three sections, if you will. So again, I just, lots of information and it will change as the year progresses, but it would be helpful for me to get information to the finance committee ahead of time and hopefully, it's helpful for you to kind of see and anticipate what's coming from a presentation standpoint. So I certainly welcome your thoughts as you digest this and you want to get back to me individually or at a future meeting, but I just want to try to get ahead of it here, if you will, before the fiscal year, or before the school year starts, anyway.
Kevin?
This is wonderful. Both these are wonderful documents to have. I have not seen anything like this before. And from a planning and informational thing, this is just a great graphical piece to tell us when we have a call to action, which, sitting on the finance committee, it's really nice. And so one thought is, maybe you've already thought of this, are you sending this out to the committee so they could be playful for the year on when they should attend? That's the citizen folks and then I think we have some staff representation as well. So maybe you're already on top of that. And then the other one is more a little bit of humor, but am I the only guy that saw a rotary phone dial in this one?
I saw it.
Nice job.
So organized. Thank you very much.
It looks like we'll see a lot of you. You have two nights off. Only two nights, you're not visiting with us.
Or two of those nights and the two nights.
We should have a lot of information throughout the year. So thank you very much for planning ahead and making us aware of what you're planning to do. Anything else? Workshop week schedule, August 28th through August 31st.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, the workshop week schedule is something that Lynn Veeker and her team spend a lot of time on, making sure that we're using the time as efficiently as possible and also trying to accomplish some of the goals that we have set up for the year. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to you and go over it a little bit with us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larson, Madam Chair, members of the board. Like Dr. Larson was saying, we are very busy in August and it's kind of an exciting month. I've been seeing a lot of teachers that come in now to do the curriculum review and what you're working on all summer. So it's a fun month to kind of get started with things. But one of the first weeks is that pre-workshop week where he talked about the instructional leadership team meeting and that's on that Monday and Tuesday and you are certainly welcome to attend. And that we do because we do a lot of planning for the World's Best Workforce and the goals and the data and look at, you know, how do we set up our staff development? We have the special ed staff coming back on Wednesday for the special ed welcome back for all the teachers. And then on Wednesday, we have the new teachers and on Thursday, we have the new teachers coming in for some of the teacher orientation. Then we have the, next week is the kickoff week for everybody coming back on Monday, but our district welcome back time is going to be on Wednesday morning. We've traditionally had that for the last few years so that staff can get into their buildings, kind of get settled. And then we have the larger welcome back then on that Wednesday mornings, starting at 10 o'clock, we have Dr. Larson and then a school board welcome back and I believe Julie, are you welcome with Stacy? Okay, Stacy's welcoming us back. That's great. And then the introduction of the Teacher of the Year this year and the Teacher of the Year does a presentation also that morning. And then we have the staff recognitions and awards. Then we'll lunch them for all staff getting together. Pair professionals have their welcome back coming up on Thursday of that week and then they get a chance to come in here, learn about some of the changes and we go over some of the information for all pair professionals in the morning. And then they go to their buildings and work with their individual staff in that afternoon. Wildwood has the workshop week with responsive classroom training, starting out right away on Monday, which is to help support our social, emotional goals that we have within the school this year. And we're looking at really adding to the responsive classroom training and making sure all staff are trained across the board and then implementing the responsive classroom in the classes. We have the balanced literacy training, we'll continue with that as part of our literacy initiative. That will be on Tuesday. We'll have the PLC meetings that are the team planning meetings, grade level meetings, and then with their open house is 31st that evening. OH is similar. This year, they're going to be actually working together with Wildwood with the responsive classroom and balanced literacy training and their open house is also the 31st. The middle school is looking at the personalized learning, so really have that student center as, you know, students being the center of the focus for all of the instruction. Also looking at the restorative practice. Their open house is on Tuesday from 1 till 7. Then we have the equity and then the status professional development. It was cut off on that end there, but it's equity training and review on some of the things that they can put into the classroom for expanding the equity practices. Then their team meetings then will be Thursday. We have a high school where we'll have the professional development with Joel Montouring and he actually is working with the teams on building strong PLC teams and continuing that work and developing the strong community within the high school. The humanities training with the absent narrative is a part that the language arts and social studies teams will be part of as we work on really trying to put the equity focus within the classroom and how does that look and making sure that we hear from, have stories and from all, covering all of the different people that might be writers within the language arts and the social studies. The rich math tasks is part of our continuing work with the math with Terry Wyberg. He's coming out to work with the math team on putting the tasks in place for the high school of how to make them, would be, when you talk about rich masks, it's really making them, I'm just trying to think of the word that you would say to look at that. It's more of trying to make it really real for the students and interesting and the active learning happening with the rich math tasks. Then we have the student orientation, which is on 30th from 4 to 8, and then their PLC planning. So we have a busy couple of weeks coming up here. It's really an exciting month, though. August is always a fun month. We're getting started.
Do we have a speaker for the general session in the Chautauqua where Stacy's speaking? The past couple of years, we have. Do we have someone coming this year?
This year, we do not have a general speaker. We have just the smaller presentations.
Just something else, too, for board members to be aware of. I got an email from Deb Lauer, who does a lot of our outreach, and on the 23rd and 24th of this month, from 5:30 to 7:00, Julie Rowling and Deb and a few others, I think, are going out to some of our communities that maybe don't always, aren't the first to come into the schools right away. So some of our recent immigrant families and what have you. And I'm blanking on the names of the, one of the spots that we're going is up by Century College. Is it?
It's Lincoln Place, I think. It's Tom Lincoln.
There's another one, though. There's.
Right. It's the yellow one.
Ledge Stone or?
No, that's behind by that.
Woodland.
Woodland. Thank you.
Within townhouses.
So anyway, I told Deb that I would attend both of those, but if anybody else wishes to attend, they can see me after the meeting and I can get you queued up. But I mean, it's just going in and seeing, kind of assessing where people are on their readiness to start back to school.
They do a very nice job of that.
If I may add to that as well, on those dates, Patrick and the tech team is there and they will help people get internet connected and they've worked with other organizations in the past and it's been a nice community building event as well.
I want to ask another question. I noticed for the middle schooler during equity work, which builds on board goals and MPs that we've been doing, so it's very good to see that. Where are we with the Heather Hackman work? I know she's come in and worked with the administrative team last year and then she's working at the board next week. At what point will she start to work with teachers?
What we're doing is we're looking at, we went to, some of the staff went to the Nexus training and you'll hear a little bit more about that. And we're trying to put the practical strategies in place in the hands of the teachers. We'll do some of that in the instructional leadership team days on Monday, mostly on Monday, because Tuesday, they'll get a chance to really work more as a building. But then throughout the year, Beth is working on that with, is it Kirsten and Sarah, Sarah Dusick. And they went to a week-long training to look at some of the strategies that the teachers could take right now, use and put in place for that equity work. So we're trying to make it more practical for them so that they have something to start with right away.
But also, if I may, Madam Chair, we're not using Heather Hackman with teachers. She's worked with the principals and the leadership team to establish a core and a base of knowledge and skill set. And so our formalized relationship with her will end.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or comments on the opening?
Thank you very much.
Family Means, Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, we've been working with Family Means for some time now. We take mental illness very seriously because there is cases of mental illness that we need to work with in terms of students and the support that they need. I'd like to have Beth Sneeden explain a little bit about the program and introduce Pat Rogers. I believe, Pat, you were here five years ago as well, speaking to the board.
I was here.
Okay. But anyway, so Beth, if I can ask you to come to the podium and have Pat speak a little bit as well.
Thank you, Dr. Larson, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Dr. Larson mentioned, we have had a partnership with Family Means for over five years now. Pat was actually the one that came to us and made a proposal in regards to applying for a grant to support mental health services within the school buildings. And with, throughout the last five years, we've seen that really evolve, not only in the partnership between the school and Family Means, but also in the number of students and families that are taking advantage of that service. So I've asked Pat to come and just give you an update, give you some history, let you know where we're currently at, and then also look at where we're going in the future. So, Pat, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be back. So the state, Minnesota, provided money that allowed us to come and work with you. It's, school-based mental health has really gotten a lot of attention nationally over the last five to 10 years, which is wonderful. I'll mention Family Means has actually had therapists placed in schools for, since 1997. So we've been doing that for a long time. And it's really wonderful to see the support for women going through the service. So Minnesota decided to have some money available. There's 30-some states that have done this. Minnesota has made more money available than the other states, so they really are taking this seriously. So it allowed us to come into this district. We are currently serving three districts in Minnesota. We also serve three districts in Wisconsin. So the funding has been key. In the early years, we were able to do this work because of foundation and individual community support donations. And we are still supporting many of our schools that way. We've sustained that since we started 20 years ago, which has been wonderful. The state, we're entering our last year in this grant cycle and the state has given us every indication that they will renew and there will be a second cycle. We are waiting for the RFP. They originally said that we would get it this summer, but we're working with the state and it's complicated. So we haven't gotten the RFP yet. What we, what Family Means ended up doing, because as Beth said, every year, the number of students and families that are asking for our services are from. And so in other schools right now, in districts we're at, if you were asked, boy, could you give us another day in this school or could you serve this school as well? We say, yes, let's do that. And we've been, and staff have been going along with the recognition of the need. We overextended ourselves. So this last year, we ran at a deficit because our excitement got the better of us and we expanded past what our financial support allows. So we have this last year that we have to go through before we get the next grant cycle. I'm assuming that when the next RFP comes out, that we can write for the current need so expand what we're asking for and come back full and ready and we'll work in even more expansion into that. But we are struggling for this next school year and so we have asked the districts that we are working with if they can find a way to reduce our presence by one day in the districts or seek additional funding from another source that would allow us to stay. So it's a difficult, it's a difficult ask. It's disheartening, but we have to balance that one year and the encouraging part is that we really do see that as for one year. And then with the new RFP, starting in fall of 2018, we'll be back and maybe even more. So that's an overview of where we're at. Is there anything else that you were thinking would be helpful?
You know, I think the important thing to know is Pat and Diane Craighold came in this spring, met with each building and really talked about what they saw as their current needs and then their projections going further. And then that information they're taking, putting into the next grant cycle and hopefully really truly matching what the need is with the service or the grant that they're getting. The other thing is Pat talked about getting overexcited. We were benefactors of that in regards to, we started out with two days and we had five days last year. So we just really saw the need grow. We saw families being more open or maybe they were always open and it wasn't available and they were choosing to participate in it. Last year, we had two days at the high school, a day at OH Anderson, a day at Wildwood and then a day at the middle school. And we just, and the response has been very positive.
Yeah, it's been a wonderful partnership. And what I've experienced and truly believe is that the more time the therapist can spend in a district, the is that the more time the therapist can spend in a district, the stronger the whole program is. You know, when we're at a school one day, and obviously the crisis isn't going to happen on Tuesday, because that's when we happen to be there. So the more days we're present in the district, the more likely we can be available when we are needed. And the relationships that the therapist and the school staff have developed, they just get stronger and just more connected, and that helps with communication. And one of the huge benefits of school-based therapy is that you've got the parent, the school, and the therapist right there together to support the consistency across the board to support those students. So there's just so much that is exciting about it.
Also, they have been able to provide services during the summer if families decide to continue. Otherwise, we look at starting up right in the fall. Last spring, staff were asked to identify students that they thought could or should get support. So we were looking at how to even streamline the time so that when we get back in the fall, we can take advantage of therapists in the building right away. So I think it's been, we've learned as we've gone. I think it was smooth at the beginning, but it's gotten extremely smooth as we've gone along, and it certainly has met a need within the buildings. And then what we'll look at this year is we also got some time, and Mark, you might want to talk about it a little bit, from...
Hazelton.
Hazelton. So what I will do with the high school staff is look at, or pull together, the Family Means counselor, the Hazelton counselor, Terry Troutman, who's currently doing some chemical support and mental health support at the high school, along with the counselors, and really look at, how do we make sure all these services are flowing well together? And it's a comprehensive approach. So I think we've been very fortunate with the staff that we have in-house. We've been very fortunate having staff that we've been able, or therapists that we've been able to bring in to the process, too. So, questions that you have?
Kevin?
A few things here. Carol Falowski, are you familiar with, she's a Hazelton person? And I thought that she was a monomedi person. She's an author and has written extensively on chemical abuse, so...
She does?
She does, yeah. So that might be a resource as well. Then I sent a couple of emails, I think, to you, Lynn, maybe to Mark. I can't remember, Beth, if I, CC, but I saw a couple opportunities for funding in this arena, and I think the response I got at the time was, again, based on what we knew at the time, was we're fine, we've got the program going, we've got funding, everything's cool. But I'm wondering if you want back and re, maybe I could look for them, too.
I was saying it's a similar funding that we already got, so that's the funding that she was talking about?
Yeah, but it sounds like there's more funding needed.
My understanding, if I am thinking right about the ones that you sent, it really was based on free and reduced?
Okay.
With our demographics?
Didn't work.
I think if I'm correct, I did look at that. I looked at the application. I looked at what the requirements were, and if we're talking about the same one, that one was based more on free and reduced.
Yeah, I'm not sure, and I'm all about, I'm all about helping fund. And so I, maybe there's some piece that we could talk about later, about additional opportunities. Okay? Because I just, this is such an important thing. And the last thing I have is, have, and I mean, this is a little different than yours, but the mental health thing kind of kicked me to think about this, was the mental health first aid. Do we do any of that training in our buildings?
We did five years ago at the high school.
Was that helpful?
I think there was mixed reviews, and probably those closer to it felt it was helpful, and those that were further away in regards to their role and responsibilities.
There is some, I'm involved with the big four, which is the association between counties, school boards, counties, school boards, townships, and cities. We work together collaboratively on things such as mental health, and so there are some free mental health first aid courses that are coming down the pike. If you had an interest, I could maybe get that going.
If you could send it to me, and then I'll connect you and get...
Okay. Thank you.
After most of you wanted to talk about Hazelton...
Very briefly, this is through Connie Hayes in District 916, and I spoke with Mrs. Nickelby to see if she'd be interested. She was, and so this is going to be funded through 916, and it won't be any cost to monomedi. And we'll have a person at the high school one day a week. Excuse me, I should, for those who don't know, Hazelton is a chemical health and chemical dependency organization that does a lot of work with adolescent chemical abuse and others as well. I think they've evolved also into eating disorders, I think. Not sure on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat.
Thanks. Nice job.
All right.
Item 9E, second reading policies with recommended MSBA changes or MDE civil rights review changes. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policies are not included in your packet, because we didn't want to print off 100, some pages, about 100 pages of them. There are no changes from the first reading to the second reading this time, and had not been contacted by any board members to see if there's anything that was to be changed or of anything of interest. The policies are veterans preference, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, student promotion, retention, and program design, protection and privacy of pupil records, technology acceptable use and safety, violence prevention applicable to staff and students, curriculum development, instructional curriculum. Those ones all had minor changes or modifications based by the change in Minnesota statute or the Minnesota School Boards Association. The next five had changes because of the Department of Ed's Civil Rights Review, and that was equal educational opportunity, equal employment opportunity, disability nondiscrimination, student disability nondiscrimination, and student sex nondiscrimination. For those policies, they want to have a person's position and contact information as part of the policy. And those are the, that was it, and so changes very minor. They've been implemented. I would ask the board to provide direction and ideally get them approved this September 14th, unless there's issues with a policy or two.
Any comments from board members on any of the policies? All right. Thank you.
They'll come back for a third reading then in September.
Right. September will be the third reading, and we'll vote at action at that point to approve those changes.
Onto action items. 10A, approval of 2018 school board meeting schedule. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The top, the schedule is included in your packet. The regular meetings are the second Thursday, except January, we have that one right after, that's the first Thursday. Part of it's because of the Minnesota School Board's Leadership Conference. Also, we want to take changes based on an election that would happen then. The study sessions are on the fourth Thursday of the month. We do have dinner and committee schedules. Those have been sent out separately. You saw some of them already tonight with Mr. Manazzi. Our July planning retreat is scheduled to be on the same day as your school board meeting, that's July 12, 2018. The retreat, again, will be from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The school board meeting then starts at 4:00. The school meeting starts at 4:00. All the other ones are at 7:00 p.m. Recommendation is to approve as presented or ask questions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second discussion? I don't remember getting the committee list. I mean, I see it in Bill's materials, but the other committees, I haven't, is it, you said you sent that out? Did I miss that?
I don't think I saw that either.
I haven't seen that.
Laura sent it.
You sent it?
She sent it at the end of last week, maybe?
Okay.
No, now I'm remembering that there are so many. Thank you for that. But I'm noticing on this list, the July 12th retreat's not listed. It just has the regular meeting listed. Don't we have to have the July retreat listed here as well?
You're right. We do not have the retreat listed. We have not had the retreat listed on the last one, but we can add it if we think that's...
Because it's part of a regular meeting, isn't it? Isn't, because it's considered a regular meeting, so it has to be listed.
Okay, we'll add it to the retreat done before that. That doesn't matter. If we should do it, then we should.
But this is only the partial schedule, because all the meetings, the committee meetings, will get integrated into the same schedule, and then there's one document with everything. Is that right? So we're only looking at, no? Because what I have for this year has all the committee meetings on it as well.
The one that she sent out does have everything on there.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Like the planning retreat and everything is on there. There's two different...
Right. There's two different formats?
The reason we have two different formats is because we threw the board meeting schedule with the study sessions and the regular meetings, and then if there's any change in those, we also have to come to the board for approval of the revision. But because the subcommittee meetings are so subject to change, they're not part of that whole approval process.
Okay. So this one-page document is so we can keep track of the ones that the board has to approve the changes on, and the other ones the board doesn't approve the changes on. Just seems like a lot of work to maintain two documents. So thank you, Laura, for maintaining two documents. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor for approving the schedule as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, approval of resolution relating to 2017-18 open enrollment. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, before you, this is the fourth window and the last window in which we act to accept students or close all grades. As you can see by the document in front of you, it gives a little bit of a history of when the open enrollment window, application windows are, and the recommendations are here below. The class sizes that are current and projected are also included in the packet here. For example, kindergarten, there are, we have 47 students, so we deny all of those students. Our projected enrollment is to be 160, and that's what we want to have it. Again, though, I want to emphasize that this net attrition column is iffy, and so that's a problem. We don't know exactly if more kids will also show up here, but we are expecting to be at 160 in kindergarten. In grade one, we have five siblings that have applied for open enrollment. If we accept those students, that would put us, and the net attrition works out, that would put us at our target of 184. Our grade two, we would accept the one sibling and two others. That would put us at 190, excuse me, I'm sorry. That would put us at 197. That's three below what we're projecting. In grade three, we've had this discussion, in grade five before, about siblings that we would deny both of those grades. The expected enrollment is 211 respectively, and 241.
We've already closed those grades, don't you?
Right, yes.
Those grades are closed.
Yeah, so we want to take action to deny the students.
Okay. Thank you.
Then on the, I'm sorry, then with the next grade levels that we're looking at, in grade seven, eight, and nine, or six, seven, eight, excuse me, we would accept the students as presented here. This does put us over what we had been expecting. However, in conversations with Dr. Newbeck and looking at our past history, we think that this will probably turn out to be okay. And the reasons for that is that students who have withdrawn aren't entered into the system yet, and so we're probably a little bit artificially high. We had 11 students last year in August. That was very unusual. That's also unlikely to happen. The other thing is that we are seeing more students deny once they've been accepted. So for example, in this particular year, we have had a number of students deny our enrollment, I believe that number is 47, who have denied after they've been accepted. And so that would happen for grades six, seven, and eight. In grades nine, we would deny all 17 of the students who have applied. Expected enrollment is 313. That's a little bit higher than what we want. Grade 10, we'd deny those seven. Expected enrollment is 311. And grade 11, we deny five students, would be at 297. So the recommendation before you is to approve as presented.
Is there a motion? I need approval.
Second.
Second discussion. Questions?
I have a question. On the ones where, for instance, grade eight, except two others, are we, there's no other applicants to deny?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? See, I have a list here. How are we considering the HUGO development and summer home sales? Have you looked at home sales to know where we stand with that?
No, not home sales, but did look at, part of Dr. Newbeck's conversation with me at the TIES cohort is that the phase one is not even close to starting.
Right.
So it will not happen for this year.
Okay. And then home sales, are we looking at that data to see how the market's moving in terms of...
Anecdotally, houses are selling, but it seems the market is, it seems that the market is saturated now. I mean, there isn't as much movement. People who have moved have already done so.
You've got that from the housing data?
Just anecdotes.
Anecdotal. Okay. You say that the students aren't telling us when they leave, so how do we know they're leaving? Do we have some indication there?
Just the past, just the past history of when we've had students who have left, they, we, also in September, we get a note saying that, or we get a communication to the district office or to the building secretary saying that the student has left. It's a real soft...
Right. I'm asking this because I was under the impression at the last window that we felt pretty good about where we were, and so this recommendation to me is kind of a surprise, because I thought we were sort of feeling really good about where we were for the last recommendation, but now I hear you saying that we're expecting the kids to move out, and I'm wondering where that's coming from to understand, and if we have these kids moving out, do we know why they're moving out? And I'm getting some anecdotal pieces, too, about kids leaving, and I'm just curious about what's driving us now to think that these, the numbers that we had the last open enrollment window aren't going to come through.
Three things on it. One is that we do have indications that we've had seven students who have moved out, three kindergartners, two first grade, and one second grade, and one seventh grade, and those are included in the numbers. That's included, excuse me, in the document you have here. We've had 45 students who have declined, I said 47, it's actually 45 students have declined open enrollment, and we're of the opinion that when students are accepted later on in the summer, they've already made up their minds, the family's already committed to that district. And then the third reason is, is that I'd rather be high with an enrollment rather than low for strictly budgetary reasons.
So for budgetary reasons, our goal was 3282, is that right? So we're even still coming in below that goal? Is that the right number? Bill's not here anymore. I pulled that from a previous. Thirty, yeah, see, I...
3277. I thought it was 3232.
That's where we are right now.
Right.
No, that was the target enrollment.
Yeah, but that, yes, you are correct, but that doesn't take into account the fact that we're budgeting on a different number, because we're trying to get O.H. Anderson down to eight sections in each building, and we're over, we have nine in grade four and nine in grade five. And so we're over just in those two grades, or those three grades, nine.
But if the goal is 3232, this will push us up to 3277. Right. So that's 45 over. That's 45 over.
Right, but we didn't budget on 3232.
I thought that's the number we asked for, is what the budget, what do we budget on?
I think it was 3272 or 3277.
We don't know what we budgeted on?
You'll have to give me a minute, please.
Because that's the question I have, is do we have enough students for the budget? Are we just padding the budget at this point, or are we just confirming that we make budget? I'm trying to understand the rationale for adding these students.
Madam Chair, I can't put my hand right on it now, but if we could go to the shared drive and one of the board presentations in which it has the enrollment in there, I could tell you the number by doing that.
I was looking at, let me ask a question. Go ahead. Mark, on the grade 11, it says deny the ones there, but the projected enrollment is 297, so I thought that the goal was 300.
We wanted to have the high school be of a certain size as well, so we don't want to, we're already high in grades nine and 10.
I see. So you're over, you do the four grades as a whole? Okay.
Is that multiple, I mean, we look at individual grade levels, and which comes down to individual classrooms, the class size. We look at building size, because O.H. has a little bit larger than we want right now, and the whole model's built upon that 1,200 of the high schools, so we look at that, but then we also look at total district enrollment for the budget, which makes this so complex and so difficult. Because if you look at the district number, that's my question about, do we need these kids?
Right.
Because then that trickles down to class size and building size and pieces like that.
Madam Chair, I believe that this 3277 is pretty close to what we've done in years before the last...
It was when we were in 2013, 14. I got the old data, so...
But at one point, I believe, we had, we budgeted on 3311 or 3307 or something of that nature, but then we lose, right, don't we? We did learn that we lose one to one and a half percent.
Right.
So we shoot a little high with the expectation that we're going to lose that, that one So, we shoot a little high with the expectation that we're going to lose that, that one to one and a half percent. So, to me, this rings pretty close to what we historically have done, but then we had the little underestimation last year, so.
As of April two thousand and seventeen, we, at that meeting, we learned our budget was built on thirty-two sixty-three, but at that time it was, is that not right?
I thought it was higher, but.
Well, and we were looking at a one and a half, one and a half percent formula increase at that time, so I think that's why we're thinking of different numbers.
I have, I have, option one was thirty-two seventy-four, and option two was thirty-two eighty-three. Thirty-two seventy-four was the number.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I'm comfortable with what's being proposed.
I am too.
Thank you, Patrick. Thanks for doing that.
This is thirty-two seventy-four, as we can see there. And just for clarification, grade twelve is three hundred and ten there, but that includes twenty out of district students, which is a number that we, we have to budget in there for enrollment purposes and budgetary purposes, but they go elsewhere.
Right.
One other thing that I'd like to add, Madam Chair, is that the resolution, the state of Minnesota's established open enrollment programs, has also established criteria. The school board seeks to maintain continuity of program, curriculum, and services, whereas open enrollment was closed February ninth, grade twelve, and grades three and five for the twenty-seventeen eighteen school year, and for those, for those without a sibling that currently attend, or children of employees as per statute one twenty-four D point oh-three. But also be therefore resolved, the superintendent be authorized to approve where grade capacity and class size permits additional student enrollment from the waiting list, which includes children who have a sibling or siblings that currently attend or attends and children of employees as per the statute. We took this out one year, but the idea is that there would be a chance that if, all of a sudden, on, we mail out the letters on Monday or Friday, and they come back, and we have a whole bunch of declines, that I'm authorized to go to the next person on the list to get those numbers.
Right, this isn't authorizing more than what we're saying. It's just saying you can replace.
Yes, yes.
But we also talked about last time about a cutoff date for offers and acceptance. Are you still planning on doing that, and if so, what are the dates you're thinking?
August twentieth, we're making the final determination, because there's only ten days left of the summer, and it's, that's the time that students would be able to.
Prepare. So, if they don't accept by August twentieth, their slot is not available.
We'll communicate with them and say, we're giving your slot to somebody else.
But we're not, because we want offer on August twentieth, would we? That's why.
Oh, so, no, I mean, if, okay, so on August twentieth, here's the hypothetical scenario. So, a student on August twentieth says, I've decided I'm not coming, then we'd go to the next person on the list, and if that happened on August twenty-first, then so be it, but we don't want to go beyond that.
Okay, I was.
So.
That gives us ten days from today for people to get the communication and decide whether or not they're going to attend.
Okay.
So, but once school has started, this is done, right?
Yes, before then.
Before school is done.
So, what is, what is your cutoff date for making offers and accepting students? I mean, I understand that this piece about the paragraph, if someone declines, you know, that piece, but you had said you, you wanted to have this cutoff date, and I was curious what you selected.
Yeah, that's when it's first.
So, if they don't accept, even if they're second round by the twenty-first, they have a day to decide, and then it's closed, and so, okay.
And we can communicate that to families upfront as well. The issue is twofold. One, for families, it can be very inconvenient in terms of transportation, all of those things. The other thing is that a lot of times the students, particularly in the older grades, have made friends and teams of practices have started and all of those type of things.
I think it's fair to our teachers too, that they don't have students walking in a day ahead of time. Our elementary teachers, I know, do a lot of prep around name tags and pieces like that, and even our middle school, high school teachers, and thinking about how they're going to run their classrooms. Adding kids late is difficult, I think, and not fair to them. So, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, the motion is presented to accept twenty additional students in the grade levels as Dr. Larson presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item was to look at the personnel, and I had asked that to come off the consent agenda. We had a question from a board member about this, so I just wanted to make sure we all had the information, because there are a couple of pieces that happened earlier in the year, remember, on January eleventh, as a board, we had said to the administration, no new positions, no additional staff should be hired in terms of creating new positions, and so I was curious about some of the positions on here, if they were new or not. There's also the DMC work that was done last year, the District Management Council had given us the idea that, and I think that's where it came from, Dr. Larson had talked to us some about the number of pairs in the district, and then the final piece I was curious about was the media piece. We had a budget cut in, presented to us in the springtime, I don't have those dates, that the retirement of the teacher at the media center at the middle school, or at the high school would be a budget cut, and middle school would be a budget cut, and now I see positions on here, so I have questions there. And those came through email, but with the timing of the agenda coming out and the board meeting and schedules, I just want to make sure we all had the right information before we made these approvals. So, Dr. Larson?
Sure, I'll walk through each one. Lindsay Abraham is the Early Childhood Family Education Associate. She replaces the position there. Mary Beldon is media at the middle school. This is a one-year interim plan for Ms. Burris, it's four point hours as a paraprofessional. It's an additional cost of about eleven thousand. I'm going to skip Taryn for a moment, and Susan Decker is a media high school paraprofessional. It's the one-year interim plan, or four point five hours. This is an additional cost of about twelve thousand dollars. So, between the two, that's about a twenty-three thousand dollar increase. We budgeted savings of sixty-five thousand. The total salary of the person leaving, minus the twenty-three thousand dollars here, and minus the sixty-five thousand that we've budgeted, means that the savings is actually about fifteen thousand dollars more than what we had originally presented to the board.
So, it keeps in line the budget cut, because the budget cut was under full salary?
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Taryn Colberly is Spanish, she's returned from position last year, was reposted, but she split with the high school and middle school. Bryce Ellison, he's chemistry teacher, he's replacing Ms. Childs, who retired. Brandt Evender is a special education's teacher at the middle school, is replacing Ms. Wendelbe. Amanda Gratzner is occupational therapist, she's on a long-term contract, she's replacing the teacher who's on medical leave. Holly Grams is a school psychologist, she'll be at the middle school, she's replacing Dr. Hokinson, who's going to O-H Anderson, she's replacing Ms. Boyce, who's moving to the district data, because Ms. O'Connor, we've taken a leave of absent, that's in the next approval item there. Dan Jaderholm is at social studies, he's replacing Mr. Schaefer, who has left the district. Lisa Joseph, she is a lunchroom paraprofessional, replacing. Gail Colkinson is art, at point nine, she'll be at, she'll be at the middle school in art, because of the non-renewal of the teacher, and the middle school teacher will be taking the family and consumer science class at the high school full-time. Jessica Coomer is a preschool teacher, she's replacing someone. Amy Lemme is a media at Wildwood, she's replacing Dawn Barrett, who has retired. Marcos Rodriguez is a special education paraprofessional, is replacing Mr. Carroll. Mindy Rosinsky is the due process person, she's at the high school, replacing Ri, who has moved to the Wildwood. Caitlin Swisher is a fourth grade at O-H Anderson, she's replacing Mr. Byer, who has moved to the middle school. He's replacing Mr. Harling and Ms. Raphis. Mr. Byer will also have some race to reduce funds to pay part of his salary. Ms. Willers had been in that position as well, she's moving to full-time to the middle school, which is prompting Ms. Schaefer to move to the high school. Mr. Murphy has retired, and that means that Mr. Harling and Ms. Raphis, their combined point-six position is what that was at the middle school, it's not going to be at the high school, being that it was a total reduction of point-four in science. Renee Vadnis is a building-registered nurse at Wildwood, and she's replacing Headstrong.
That was very helpful, thank you. Unfortunately, with the timeline, we couldn't cut out to board members prior to the meeting, so I appreciate that. We do need now to make a motion, because we pulled this up with consent agenda, to approve these positions.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second? Second? Do you have a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I've lost my agenda. I'm sorry. Yep, committee reports, thank you very much. AMSD is tomorrow.
Yep. So.
We look forward to your report next time. EEA?
No report, there's been no meetings.
MSBA?
MSBA, there has been a, a meeting. We had a board meeting on Sunday afternoon, a MSBA board meeting, and that led into Monday, which was the summer conference. We had three of us, four of us, attend that, so Julie, Lucy, Mark and I attended that day, and I think there were some really good, good pieces in there. My, my major takeaway from every, every summer that I've attended these things, we get Tom Melcher, who's with the Department of Education in, in finance, and he's good. I mean, he's dry, but he's really, really good. And so, he's always slated to be the end of the conference, and so, one of his, his second-to-last slide that he had on his deck, can Minnesota afford to invest more in E-12 education, question mark? So, what he has here, and I don't know if the camera can see it, but, "Long-term trend in state-local E-12 spending as a percentage of personal income has gone from five point oh-two percent back in nineteen ninety-five, down to four point oh-two percent this year." Five percent, four percent. So, to me, that was the most powerful piece of his entire presentation. That's the net, and we're just, we just don't have enough, year after year. Inflation is, and medical costs and things like that are eroding away, and state funding is not kept up, so, that was kind of a gloomy thing, wasn't it? So, then Tuesday, Mike and I attended Phase One and Phase Two training, which I have not done for twelve years, but what I felt, and Mike, I'll let you chime in here, but when one is elected as a school board member, it's, for that first year or two, it's like drinking from a fire hydrant. I mean, it's just like information overload, and finance, school finance, which is Phase Two, is actually in state statute that all board members need to do that, but it becomes fast and furious, and it came fast and furious Tuesday as well, but I knew so much more, so I could say, yes, 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 I know, and so it was very affirming. And I don't want to say it's like a second marriage, because I wouldn't know what that is, but it did, it was good. I enjoyed it immensely, and Mike, it was good to go together.
Very well presented.
Well, I don't know if you wanted to call out any high points of the training?
I liked the legal update. For some reason, the words may and shall, you know, when you're dealing with contracts and stuff like that, certain words have a lot of meanings, and to be very cognizant about that, and I thought that was very interesting, and I had a great lunch, so.
I'd also like to talk about MSBA real quick, because in the packet, the summer seminar was the flyer about call for presentations for the January session. We have been selected to give presentations the past two or three years, and so I know it's a board decision what we present, so I wanted to remark how you want to approach that, if you want to come up with some ideas, and then share those with us. The deadline for this is September twenty-second, so with the study session, maybe if you could come with some ideas from the building principles of proposals we could put forward, and the board could then decide what proposal we would want to put forward to MSBA for a presentation, because it is a board presentation, it's our professional conference, and a board member would have to go and be a part of that and sponsor that piece. I know Kevin will be busy still with duties, or do your duties end?
My duties officially end the last day of the conference.
Right, but during the conference, but then we'd have to figure out if there's a board member who would go and, and present that, and so if we could have that on the agenda for September twenty, or, I'm sorry, September twenty-second is when it's due, but August thirty-first, if you had some ideas from building principles of innovative, different things that fit with this, I'm sure you have this flyer too from the packet, but I think that'd be a good thing for us to discuss, since it's our professional conference. Kevin?
One more thing too, it's about the delegate assembly.
Yes.
Every two years, we choose delegates to represent the school board members across the state, and we've been lucky, we've had pretty good participation, but this is the year when we need to go forward with the change, if there's any changes, but people who have done it need to indicate desire to continue or, or not. So, there is, the process this year is a little bit different, it is, and I don't know if anybody's seen anything come out yet on it, it will be very shortly coming out. School board members have, of all the districts, the three hundred and thirty-two districts in this, in the state, have the ability, and this is very on Minnesota-like, but they have the ability to self-nominate, okay? So, when, when the thing comes out, if you have a desire, and it does not, if, you know, two or three people want to go, that's great. I know Julie's been, and Lucy didn't make the last one, but she's been on other things and was an alternate, I'd like to see with her expertise in some areas, I think it would be helpful, because three of the resolutions last year had to do with Higher Learning Committee and that, and, you know, Julie, you're pre-dialed in, and, I mean, anybody can do it, so there might be even a place for a Minnesota Chamber expert on education, so I don't know, but if, if you like that kind of stuff, it, it's great, you really get to know the policies, and then on the first weekend in December, we go over to the hotel over in Minneapolis and meet and do the delegate assembly, and I don't have to run the meeting this year, which really is great, it's really great. So, anyway, if, again, look for that to come out, don't miss that opportunity.
So, you self-nominate, but then everyone from the district votes, right? Still, everyone will still vote? That's how it was before?
Only so many spots.
Yeah.
Yep, there's only so many spots, and it's the, the district, what is it? There's the Area Fifteen and Area Sixteen make up District Six, in which we are. So, you know, I think there's six slots for each of the areas. So, who knows what the interest will be out there? I just don't know, but then we all collectively vote on who our reps are going to be.
I just, I had one other thing I wanted to ask Dr. Larson to, if he could include in the weekly notes, I did not bring the date with me, but the date of the fall legislative update session with MSBA, and instead of being at the North St. Paul Community Education Center this year, it looks like it's going to be at, at the League of Minnesota Cities in downtown, so it's, it's sometime in September, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in his book.
Is it? I, I had the date written down, and I forgot to bring it, so just wanted to mention it.
Can I ask, last year, they did a lot of looking back. Can I ask them to do a little bit more looking forward to the meeting session? Might be more helpful, or else.
At the book, you could read that.
Right.
I don't know where it is.
Right. But it is in here, but if, we can include that in the, in the board notes, so we have it on our calendars?
Yeah, so everyone could mark the date, yep.
Okay.
Or is going to.
Oh, here it is. Advocacy, oh, it doesn't have the dates. It's the nineteenth and the twentieth are the two metro ones, I think, but Mark, if you could double-check those, because those, I think, were on a handout of the locations.
They were on a handout, like one of those two.
Yeah, but I think there are two metro area ones.
Yes.
So, and then, and let me, if I highlighted, Friday, September twenty-ninth is the last day for resolutions, for the delegate assembly, if we've got resolutions we want to put forward. We've done that as well, yep, so we should be thinking about that as well. A lot of MSBA stuff.
So, I just wonder if, when is the deadline for the resolutions?
The twenty-ninth of September.
So, we've got a little time, but we should probably put something on the calendar pretty quick to anybody that has an interest in doing that.
Because last year, we did as a subgroup, there were a couple of us who got together and wrote those resolutions and brought them forward, because one of the questions they ask is, does it have board approval? So, we'd have to have it on the September board meeting to get approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be our deadline.
Yeah. Do we have a committee meeting before the twenty, or the thirty-first meeting, do you know?
We do not. We don't.
We don't, okay, so we could do it then.
Come up with a subcommittee, because the three of us have done it the last two years.
Right. Could we put it out there that anyone's interested in working on the resolutions, or having that brainstorming, talking about session, to meet maybe from six to seven prior to the board meeting, and we can at least get ideas down, and we can refine them and put them forward? Does that make sense to people? Because I'm afraid if we wait too long, it's going to be problematic, and if you're not interested, we're not offended, if we just want to make sure it's open to all board members and have a, does that make sense, Dr. Larson?
Is that on August thirty-first or the September board meeting?
Well, we have to have it approved at the September board meeting, right? So, wouldn't it have to be the thirty-first?
Yep.
Because the September board meeting would be the fourteenth, because it has to be approved by the board, and it's due the twenty-ninth, unless we want to approve it the study session, but that's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, let's, let's do the thirty-first.
And it's only, it's only for interested. If you're not interested, or if you have an idea, you just want to send an email to me, I know, I'll, I'll go and, and be part of that. If you have an idea for resolution, but you're not interested in writing it, or you can't be there, if you'll send that idea forward, we'll take a first stab at whoever shows up that night. Does that make sense? Mark, if you have some ideas, too, we'd appreciate having those at that time.
If you don't like public speaking, I would not recommend it.
The delegate assembly?
Yes.
We've put you on the spot a couple times.
Until you stand on the DS and run that meeting, and you don't know the word, you don't know the meaning of scary.
Okay.
That was enough scary for me.
So a lot of MSBA there. 916, is that a package?
There is a package, it's in the packet, but I do want to say that Pankalo is really fabulous, and I hope that you all would have a chance. They took, they took Carner Blue's concepts and mo, you know, and took the things that were really good and kept them, and the things that, that they thought, "You know, wish we had curved that wall, or made these windows deeper." They were able to incorporate that. The playgrounds are really unusual and different, they're based on music. So there's things like drums, there's things like, you know, that are, are weather solid, you know, you don't just see a typical, it's really, it's worth going out there to see.
There was a tour.
There was just a tour, yeah.
Dr. Larson, you made the tour as well?
No, I did not.
I didn't do, I, I did the tour the night, the tour is the first, our board meeting was the second, and we had the board meeting at Pankalo, and then after that meeting, everybody was, retoured. So it was, it was very, if you get a chance to go out there. It's not very far. I mean, it's just.
They have these tours periodically, as I recall, right?
Yeah, I think they did, but, yeah, they will, so.
I toured, there's some other facilities in this, right, and it's very worthwhile.
That's all.
And if there's another tour, we can call Connie and.
Yeah, I'm, you can, I'm sure you can get in anytime that you want to go.
All right. Other reports, other groups that have met? The Joy of Summer. Okay, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Several things here, just very recently, in the last couple of weeks, involved in a ties cohort of Area 916 superintendents and their teams. Dr. Newbeck was with me on that, as was Lynn Veeker and Beth Sneeden. We're working on three different things, innovation, leadership capacity, and personalized learning. It's good days. On Friday, Patrick Crowthers and I went to Optum in Eden Prairie, we're working with their group called Optum Ignite, and there are eight school districts in the state that are working with them. Those are Austin, Becker, Cambridge-Issany, Eden Prairie, Montomédi, Minnetonka, Orono, and Stillwater. The purpose of that organization is to innovate and try to grow and encourage innovative ideas from the ground up. They have some crowdsourcing software that they're interested in using. I mentioned this last year, I think, just probably in passing, because the software is cost prohibitive, it's made free this year to these eight school districts, and it's ways that people can contribute and add ideas and suggestions about what they can do to, that's an innovative idea. And ideally, there would be three areas, small, medium, and large, and then we would look at ways about how to determine which ideas are best, and then how to go about implementing them. The Minnesota School Board Back-to-School Conferences has been mentioned a lot, but the keynote was about thinking, top 20 thinking above the line and below the line, and that's work that Dr. Newbeck has done at the middle school, and so I think it is tied in pretty collectively. On the Minnesota Department of Education, they had their back-to-school conferences on Tuesday and Wednesday. The highlight for me was the Generation Z presentation, I still have to do more work in thinking about that, but those are the children that are born between 1995 and 2012. And obviously, you know, it's, if you're born on January 1st, 1995, as opposed to December 31st, 1994, there's soft numbers, but it's a different kind of generation as opposed to the millennials or the Generation Y students, and it's a different world. One of the things that I was struck by was the acronym FOMO, FOMO, and it's a driving force of, of children of that, that age, and it is a sense of fear of missing out, which means that so oftentimes, that's why they're constantly checking their Twitter feed or their Snapchat, because there's a fear that the people of that age have of missing out on something. The keynote speaker was a father and son combination, the son wants to be this voice for Generation Z. He's a recent high school graduate, and he's taking a gap year right now, he's on the Board of Directors of Blackboard, which is an educational software provider, and so they had some really interesting things to talk about with that. In terms of the parking lot, we've had some rain, as you know, and there was a problem in the middle school, looked like a lake, but they worked on it really, really hard. And Peterson Construction has assured Mr. Osterbauer, who's the head of buildings and grounds, that they'll have asphalt in the middle school parking lot by next Wednesday, August 16th. The front of the high school is now closed off, as you may have seen, the concrete walls continue to be poured at the high school and the middle school. Sod has been later on the high school and will be by the middle school. Lights are going up, Washington County is working on a signal and signage, it should be operational soon. And then they found crushed roof drain structures in front of the middle school, and that's happening today, and then Mrs. Osterbauer reported to me that they're forking, using the forklift feverishly to get them replaced, so as not to delay the project. She's out there every day, and she is putting in really a lot of hours, but really on top of things. I want to include the quote that she gave me today, "All in all, with the delays we've had and the infrastructure needing to be replaced, I feel really good about where we are at, and yes, we'll be ready for staff and students." And then on Monday, August 14th, Sarah Moore, the White Bear Press newspaper columnist, will be getting a tour with Julie Osterbauer, Bill Manazzi, and me, and she'll be taking pictures and having a story about the Phase 2 abatement projects. And very much looking forward to the school year beginning. Oh, I'm sorry, may I add one more thing here?
I'm sorry.
I meant to add this, and I forgot here. We've been doing some work with civil rights, and there was an issue about alleging discrimination based on disability on our website. Patrick Crowthers and his team has been doing a lot of work on that, and it appears as if almost all of the issues are resolved. There's been communication back and forth. For example, there, they had a complaint, the Office of Civil Rights had a complaint about the PTO page. That's not our page, we link to it out of the goodness of our hearts, and so that issue is resolved. At the Montomédi High School homepage, there were three errors, they've been resolved. We have what's called the, so when you hover over something, you can read it, so you don't have to just actually see it. There, these are waves, show that there's no errors, and there's coding on the sites that is related to header language and the alt text, and so that's how you end up finding those errors. I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that's been done to have these things fixed and get the situation resolved, so thank you to you and your team for doing all the work you've done with that.
Thank you. Kevin, your question?
Mark, in the conferences, did they talk about the Every Student Succeed Act open comment? And so there is this period of time now for the next. For August, to make comments about what the department is going to submit on September 17th, so that we can get approval from the feds. And I have some concerns about indicator number one, which is the, using the MCA as the indicator. There was some thought that we could use the ACT and SAT, but that apparently has been, right now, the department's still kind of trying to see how that might fly, but right now, MCA is the indicator. And the issue is that 95% of the students need to take it. Well, it's not a test that our students, doesn't mean for, for our students, they don't really need to take that. They, and people are getting to know that. So also in the rule is the idea that students can, and families can opt out. So I talked to the deputy commissioner, I just said this, you know, inherently, when you go into this, it doesn't seem right. I mean, it seems like No Child Left Behind, the original, where, you know, all students will be proficient by 2013, I mean, it, it, it just seems to me, when they start with a plan, it ought to not have those flaws.
Because the opt-outs count against us. Opt-outs count as not proficient.
Correct. So.
Does MSBA plan to submit comments?
Yes. Yep, but if anybody feels, I, I did mine the other day, but if anybody else feels so moved to make the comment, it's probably worthwhile, because the rest of it's pretty good. Indicator five has to do with attendance, and the idea that if you miss 10% or more of a given school year, your achievement's going to be affected. It makes sense, so, but they're not, they're phasing that in over the next three or four years. So anyway, it's worth looking at right now, because, again, once the comment is over, we're.
So I sit on the ethics committee looking at the alternative test options, and, and so we've been looking as a committee for a year now, this committee's been going on for quite a while. And looking at the possibility of ACT, and we've come to the conclusion, to meet the federal requirements to get the ACT approved, we'd have to come be a part of a consortium. We don't have the data set within our district.
Doesn't align with standards, right?
Well, it's not only aligned with the standards, but there's an approval process that we have to write up as a state, that then districts are bringing alternative tests forward. And so I sit on this committee because of what you're talking about, our kids take the ACT or the SAT, and so there's a consortium of districts who are sitting around the table because we don't have the right demographics. We can't submit only our data on our students and meet the demographic requirements, and so we have to partner with someone. So I've been sitting with a number of other districts, I sit with people in Lynn's role, and Ellen Cole used to sit with me, but I think she's withdrawn from the committee. So I've stayed with it, so we're in this consortium, when we get ready to submit, so we could do that. Also, if we can get to the point where we can submit a test like that, once one district gets it approved, it's approved for the entire state. But there are a lot of problems. It's not looking very good for us because of the standards piece, but, you know, Montomédi is at the table, in a sense, sitting, listening, and trying to figure that out, and, you know, St. Paul's at the table with us, Moundsview, I'm blanking on some of the other districts, but we have a group, and we meet at those meetings to say, you know, "Okay, what demographics do you have? How can we do this? Would this work?", you know, trying to, to bring that forward, so we could potentially, if we can, if the feds will approve our plan, so there's multiple pieces to the way that[1718.95]